Apparently this was not, I would start, start video on you. That was normally, it's automatically on, but apparently.
Nice to meet you.
You guys are in here, some Dominic. Probably be pretty short night tonight.
Tonight's gonna be a short night, thank you. Okay, we ready? So this meeting, the city of Kingston's own board of appeals will now come to order. It is six oh six, because we're so tiny.
And after the practice process.
I'm sure. My name is Brian Cafferty, I'll be chairing this proceeding. I'll take a moment to explain how to determine what are the field functions. Board is comprised of five members. We have an end five members and a very good guy. And two alternates, we haven't had either of those either. Anybody wanna? We have been appointed to serve the citizens of the city of Kingston. We perform this service to the best of our abilities on a voluntary, unpaid basis. Other board members are. Who's not resigning, even though she thinks she is. There will be a period of public comment this evening after each man's request has been presented. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members and not other speakers or audience members. Professional demeanor is expected. With that, I'm gonna look for a motion to approve the minutes from the May ninth, two thousand twenty four. I have a motion to approve from. All those in favor of approving the minutes. So that, those minutes have been accepted, and so now we're gonna get right on with the agenda. There is an applicant here, can I, Jasper?
Yes.
Have you pronounced the last name?
Gore.
Have a seat. Anywhere, yeah. So, I saw your application. Do you want to just take a moment and review with the committee on what it is that you would like to get a variance for?
Yeah, I do just want to put the same sign on the diner.
Okay, so you say it's the same sign. Your application specified as a. Twenty inch by, what was it, forty, forty eight? Twenty, twenty by forty eight?
Twenty by eighty.
Eighty, right, okay. So that sign right there is, if I recall, the sign that was on the trolley diner was much thinner. Sign was long, but it was extended, it wasn't twenty inches if I recall, but. Be that as it, be that as it may, I just, I just remember that the sign that was up there seemed. Not as tall, not as high.
But maybe half.
Right, I, yeah, that's just my recollection. Now, the rub is, and the reason you're here, as I understand it, is that. You need a variance for this because. These types of signs that go on the roofs of buildings are no, are allowed in the city, under the city zoning. And being that the trolley diner was closed for a period of time, the sign had been taken. What, what you had was what they call an existing nonconforming use. And once that use is abandoned and not used for more than a year. It creates a situation where you now have to come back and get a variance for that. Because essentially, your grandfathered situation with regard to the sign has ended. This is one of the ways that municipalities will try to get rid of existing nonconforming uses. If they're no longer actively being maintained or used. So I am not, I am personally not opposed to perhaps having a sign. Back up on the diner, given where it is and everything, I don't really think that is, personally. This is just my opinion, I don't personally believe that it's, you know, a problem. I do think, though, given I just drove over there, that building is tiny. And the signs are almost as big as the building, so it's.
No, the building is very, the building is not eight, eight inches, the building.
No, I, I know that, but I'm just talking about the scale of the sign to the size of the building. It's a tiny little building, and it just seems like it's a lot assigned for the building. Plus, what is our basic sign code in terms of square footage now, these days?
The issue is that the roof signs are prohibited altogether.
Yeah, I don't care. I, I, I don't think it's a problem putting this sign down, but that's my opinion. But I, I wanted to, if we're gonna do it, or if we're gonna consider doing it, and giving them the variance for it. Because it, it was there forever, and it was just taken down.
It's just a bit of a technicality. So, but do you have the dimensions of the previous?
I don't.
I think maybe that eight inches is okay.
It wasn't very small, I remember that.
And just, I have a picture that I, one picture, like, see, there you go. It looks nice.
I'm just trying to get into. So. So yeah. And I know that the sign is big. And we, we tried. And probably.
That doesn't make the allowance.
Yeah, no, I know different types.
We're gonna spend a lot of money on just look nice. That's why.
Okay, where is the old sign anyway?
Yeah, because we, we take it out, but.
You still have it?
Yeah, we still have it, so I can send you the picture too.
Okay, what I would love to know is what the measurements of the old sign.
Big sign, we just wanna put the sign, you know.
Yes. No, it wasn't, it was right, it was at the, it was at the roof line.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, we take it out, that sign is the picture, but I have a picture in my phone, so that's gonna be look like. On this here, exactly.
Oh, that, well, that's what the building is.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, but it's not gonna, that's not true, yeah, the side, that's.
So here, here's what I'm gonna recommend, is that I would like the, I would like the dimensions of the old sign. Because we're kind of basically talking about the possibility of allowing you to have a sign. That is the same size as the sign that was there, okay? No, I mean, do you have the sign somewhere?
I don't know, because somebody put it on the side, it is there, maybe.
Well, I didn't see it, I just drove down there. Building's pretty, it's a mess down there. No, 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 I'm sure it isn't, I, I'm sure it will be an improvement. I, I just, what I don't wanna do, if we think at all about changing this variance and restoring. You know, the sign, it just, it can't be bigger than what it was. That work definitely, that's, I'm not going to support it being bigger. And I can guarantee you that twenty inches is definitely bigger than what.
Much bigger, I think.
Yeah, it was like, I think it was like, it was like twelve, it was like. It was like twelve inch, which is really not that.
It was small, like maybe.
It was like, it was like twelve inches, yeah.
Well, yeah, you're good, because it made it.
That was the sign? Oh, it's definitely bigger, but.
Bigger than that?
Alright, so, so, but, but that, there was a different sign there. That's not the sign.
No, that's not, oh, that's not.
This is definitely not the sign.
That was another sign.
It was a long narrow sign, the trolley diner.
Yes, yeah, that's not. That's much higher, that's like this big.
So maybe they changed the, recently, the previous tenant, it used to be this one, then it changed it, maybe I don't know. But that was the original sign.
That wasn't the original, original sign. There was one before that, because I know.
Yeah, this must have been.
Cousin, the person who owned that, or friend of that.
Now, for years, it was this long, narrow sign, it was very simple. It's like, I think it might have been green, dark green and white background.
I think she, she created and signed it, the architect herself, the woman that had it deployed, that sign. Well, we have to get.
Application doesn't say shit about that, well, the person who hired on the application, not Eric, but Eric's one, it's not me, Eric's one, it's supposed to be, but.
Something.
So what are we missing? This is, this is. So this is a matter of science, it's like, they don't have competent financials. That's how her made the determination, and that's what I'm questioning. I have a question.
A tense court. How can you do that when you know that? Eric's like, there's a question, I have to check, I have to.
Where they just got. Well, very loud and it's, it's. No, but how is this thing? You also. Thing is, you guys, so there's Eric's determination. There is, either way, you guys have the power, you can put whatever conditions on something. You can restrict size of something, you guys can. Just as a reference. Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly do not want to support this as a huge variance. But I certainly could see a pretty clear avenue where we could approve this as an area law. Well, so my question is, is one is our, so if, if, if we are the board, are.
Yeah, yeah. And those statements specifically references the use of the actual activity and use of the buildings.
Twenty six East Chester.
Oh, it's thirty three six East Chester. Yep, thirty six, yep.
It's a, a use of property, it's not an M S R D, technically.
Well, it's a stretch, they call it.
Yeah, no, I know, and that's where it.
Yeah. I mean, do we have a clear cut definition of what?
Well, I mean, the, the, well, here's the. Oh, we're good.
Yeah, that's why, yes, and the whole signs.
I don't know.
We're just, it's. And it's, it doesn't matter how hard, although it could replace the kind for some years, so like that would, yeah. Yeah, it was historically, it was a sign.
Yeah.
Narrow.
It was most of the, with the building, right.
Nothing with the building, it just said trolley diner.
Yeah.
And it's, it was basically, to me, it's a historic.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and, and so something like that makes sense to me.
Totally.
But this last sign that was up there was clearly.
That was hard.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That, that never should have been allowed to be up there because it didn't even conform to the sign.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's been a long period of. Records to show that the sign was taken down. Yeah, I mean, well, the last sign it was taken down.
Who had one before this?
It did not even further.
Well, the, the new sign, the big one that was on top of there?
Yeah.
That was taken down about a year ago, but what, we're talking about the one before that.
No, we just recently started renovation, then we came to sign off.
Right, but that sign was, the original sign was, see what I'm saying? The original, but that real big one was never, we never thought that.
No, that was put up, that was, that was put up with that.
Right, that, and that's part of the.
Yeah, and yeah, I don't.
Also, that were.
I don't think that each one of the sign.
I think we have to do some.
They, they should have a picture of the original, not the one that showed us.
I definitely get a photo of the old sign.
Yes, usually by. Yeah, that's what they did.
Yeah.
They, they, they have record, that record, I found that record, same record.
Well, get us a picture.
So is it you standing, because you guys.
It's a plan of proof.
It's a.
That's why, and all the sightings, they become, the rocks, they become something.
Very good. I mean, I would, uh.
Well.
I gotta return this.
Determination, I wanna make sure. Doing properly, and that we haven't cooked an argument.
I, I have, I, I have the contact, the time, the, those last train that I went to, and I called. I would like to, to kind of carry the, the, what type of variance we're expecting us, and. And this is, see, go, she's on that, and, and, and I. I'm sure. Um, so I can probably get that, I'm sure you can get to, some, I would be happy if somebody actually has the sign. Is it somebody that I?
It's an old historical sign.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, that is John. Yeah.
We never have a.
You have.
That sign before, that we think about, no exit, and some like that.
Well, that one sign, who knows that was one of them, was.
Right, exactly, especially if somebody. Yeah, exactly, you have a happy, you know.
Yes, but you can't do that because you can't, and what you can't is to make a. You could only say.
Right, that's why I'm getting, that's why I'm going to also a variance.
It's not, yeah, I mean, if you're just looking at like street view that sign, that old sign. No, I'm square footage wise.
You go on the desk picture? It's fine.
The same thing next to the.
It's, it's small, it's a, it's a. That, I mean, there's a big difference in the aspect ratio of.
Totally.
Everything, the, the reason it worked was the old sign certainly was slender and scaled in a way that almost the length of the building. Kind of.
Yeah, yeah, look, right, yeah.
It's almost as if it was a sign on the side of the rock. It's a little stretched out, and it.
Yeah, so, like an architectural. Issues which would potentially be determined as well as, as it's right now in the application, the application is for a new variance, we all know how difficult it is to meet that criteria. So I think there's information that. Yeah, so that's what it means, there's, let's get some more information.
So that, so, so should we, should we just make a table until I have.
Wait, and request the additional information from that.
Yeah, okay, so.
Let's see, I, I don't know whether he has any information that's helpful other than, you're just looking for when the last sign was taken down?
Well, if.
The assessor's office should have that.
When the sign was taken.
Well, the original sign, the dimensions.
No, no, I'm not talking about, yeah, we're, we're talking about the last sign.
The last one, that, that big.
Picture of that.
Five months, I took it up five months ago.
Five months ago?
Yes, yeah, so it's, we had a new, should have started.
It's the original sign that was taken down.
Over a year ago.
Over a year ago.
But there was a continuing nonconforming use in place, and how big is that sign compared to the dimension? So it looks like then, if that's a continuing nonconforming use. It's not necessarily for a use variance, but that, that may be a potential area variance because the dimensions are different. So table with that additional information.
Then that we table the, the application for now, get some additional information. And see if we can, if we can come up with something that works with regard to that. I will say to you that the sign that you've designed is probably not gonna work, so we may have to go back to the drawing board.
Um, good, thank you.
Yeah. That's, that works.
So, you're gonna, I'll get information on when the sign came down. Whatever sign was there that, if you want. If you have any, if you can find out when the previous sign was last there.
That's the sign that's caused the problem.
And this, and this one only came down five months ago.
Yeah.
Which would.
Well, whatever, if you could just try, do a time, right, find a timeline as best as you can.
Okay.
And if you can get any photos and dimensions of what the original sign was, then, then that'll give us something that we can specify.
And not the most recent sign, but the original sign that said the trolley diner that ran along, the length of the, the, the original sign.
My understanding, within the last five, six years, that was the same sign, just changed the name. It used to be trolley diner, then, then behind me something happened, that's it, okay, there's no sign change, my understanding, that it was the same sign last five years.
And whatever sign has been there for the last five years, at the very minimum, we need to know the dimensions of that sign.
Right.
And, and should we make a motion for Eric to give us a written determination?
Yeah, motion, or can we make a motion to table this? And so that the board can request a written determination.
But we should, we don't need to make our initial motion to request a, 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 a determination.
You can make that as part of this motion that you're moving to table and requesting that the zoning enforcement officer provide the written determination.
I will make a motion to do those things. Table this application for the time being, and, and as we request, the zoning enforcement officer to, to give us a written explanation for his determination. As this variance.
Cause I lost you. Who came up with this name? Right, and that's the one, yeah, he had a picture.
Right, that's that big one.
Yeah, well, it's, it's big in terms that it's high.
Right, that's.
Not very long.
No, it's not as long as the other one.
Came up with this name?
I'm like.
I'm sure she's lovely. So. That's a mouthful, and it, it's just, okay, you know, twenty years of marketing and advertising experience, I can't help myself. No, deal with that, it was the last sign that was up. Okay, was it the blonde use?
They've changed the word, they're just different ones, used to be just one, that's changed.
Twenty plus years ago, it used to be like that.
And it wasn't that long ago that they.
Maybe no, I'm gonna say.
So. Yes, it just, it worked seven. And it was not conforming to the.
So it's gonna be tabled, or you know.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, it just, you need to actually vote, but I, I, I made a motion.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah, Mary second.
Okay, you guys should act, take action there, but if somebody did, but mostly, I'm understanding, nothing happened, the sign was same, just the change of words. I don't know, so we figure out.
So we're talking, we're trying to figure, get us out of there.
Yeah. Yeah, we're trying to find a path for you to be able to do this, um, yeah.
Trolley boards, they should have a size, so that's.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's.
I don't know, we're gonna, I figured out, but they should be, they should be something.
It's sad.
Blonde, blonde, that's the biggest. Cause before blonde.
Yeah, I like, but the other thing too is. Yeah, I mean, I think. Obviously, these are all considerations.
Yeah.
But, but if this was there at this time.
It could have been. Or that too, because it has, there was a.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Same square foot and time for the shape, same square foot, making up a sign that would work. Right, and that would, that would not be a. Yeah, um.
With the big.
That, that.
Yeah, so, I mean, if it's been less than a year, then honestly. Then, then you don't even, you may not need to come back there, you can document that, and you can figure out how many square foot into that sign is.
Go down, they have a record, uh, they, once they approve that sign, they have a record, so I think Suzie know that then.
Yeah, they know, if, if, if there's a documentation of that sign, and if it is, if this is a use problem, which, you know. If, you could do something of the same exact square footage.
But it doesn't necessarily have to be the same dimension.
It has to be the same shape.
So you can make it longer than that. You can't make it more square.
Well, we, we motion, we're, I just need Brian to call the roll. Okay, so, all those in favor of tabling? Can I have a?
All right.
All right, um.
So. You have a motion, right?
Yes. And you made the mo, are you? First, Mary second. Can I have a, can I have a, uh, a motion to close the meeting?
I'm going to close the meeting, awesome. Okay, so.
Everybody in favor, yay.
Yay, the September meeting is when people reconvene.
Yeah. And possibly, if you could get all that together and write that suit, we may not have to come back.
Definitely, I can stop.
Well, this table, which is probably.
No, he would just just throw that at the table.
Right.
And then it wouldn't be here, and we wouldn't.
Or says tabled, pending.
Well, right now, we're, we're pending, uh. The clarifications, you know, of determination from Eric.
Pending clarification.
Of Eric's determination.
Try and try it, Tim?
I'm trying. All, all these, all.
Blondies.
That, they're all, they're all, like, in the last couple of years, they don't have any of the whole picture.
When it was Suzie's side.
It's not. I can identify.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So just look nice.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's alright. I mean, it's just, it's the.
Any sign.
Yeah, 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 so one of the, the only thing that's a little bit screwy is, um, uh. Well, we're, we're done, right?
Yeah, we're done.
You wanna stop, or we're gonna shut this thing off?
Sure, but why stop, you can stop it, right?
I mean, I think it still records until you say stop.
Oh, really?
Yeah.